If you can hear me, we can't, I can't hear you on this end. This is Barry Halverson.
All right, Barry, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
You bet. My name is Eric Casino, I am in District Two and I am this season's Chair of the Planning Commission. With that, we'll do a sound check and introductions and we'll start out online first with Commissioner Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Joel Hansen.
Joel Hansen, District Three.
Commissioner Kestinger.
Kevin Kestinger, District One.
Dylan Wheatley, District One.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
And Commissioner Day is not going to be joining us this evening, but we'll see him next time. Thank you very much. Has everybody had a chance to look over this evening's agenda? And if so, I didn't obtain a motion. Second, with some discussion from Commissioner.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Can we add fifteen minutes? We may not need it, but can we add fifteen minutes to the end? The agenda has like one, four items happening at the same time. Four items happening at the end, at the same time, which isn't possible. So just the simple solution to that, because I want to have some, I want to talk about the minutes.
Oh, follow up moment, okay.
Yeah, so can we just add fifteen minutes? Maybe not have all of those at the same time on agendas.
Okay, we can have a discussion about that.
Other than that.
All in favor of approving this evening's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved, and I'm sorry I didn't call for that vote. Okay, with that, has everybody had a chance to look over the meeting minutes from July 6, 2022? With that, I didn't obtain a motion. Been moved by Commissioner Nelson.
Second.
Second. With that, is there any further discussion on the minutes from July 2, 2022? Call for a vote.
Commissioner Davis, excuse, Mr. Passenger.
Aye.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
I'd stay because I wasn't there.
Mr. Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye, the motion passes. And the minutes are accepted. Right, has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes from July 20, 2022? With that, I didn't obtain a motion. Second, some discussion?
Yeah, because there are some amendments to it, actually.
All right, let's go through them.
Yeah, and I don't seem to have my notes, but I did write the line numbers. So, I kind of focused on the two things that haven't had hearings yet. I wanted them to be as accurate and useful as possible. So, there's on the, on line five on the AG-18, the AG-CAO. After, I'd suggest that adding after here is further discussion and feedback on the AG-CAO. I like to add this language. Staff sought direction on whether the Planning Commission wants to pursue the direction of conservation plan approach or writing specific provisions for agriculture into Title 24, or just add agriculture as a use in Title 24 Critical Areas Ordinance. I pretty much pulled that right out of the recording. So, I just want those alternatives kind of in the record for people to see who are.
Were you able to catch that?
I can get it to you. We'll have to review the audio to catch the full, but if you all want to have discussion. Line five through seven, and this was a comment by Commissioner Nelson. I would suggest striking, there was a question the day, about the date that applies for VSP eligibility. And maybe add, instead, there was a comment that the CAO extension date timeline is different to the DSP timeline. I can take a leak at that one if Commissioner Nelson cares, but I'm just striving for accuracy. And then, line nine, I'd like to see the word enforcement added. There's before the word monitoring, monitoring and enforcement, and then local capacity for the fourth technical expertise. I'm almost done. I also wanted to capture Commissioner Nelson's comment that there was a discussion of a tiered approach to permitting based on whether or not a conservation plan should be required. It's just a, it was just a comment. It's not something staff followed up on, but I think it's an useful thing to capture.
Where would?
Where, that was line 12. I'd like to see it added there, and that's it. And then, there's just one thing on the housing.
All right.
And that's on A24, page 3520. It seems, it struck me as a bit of a misinterpretation, the way it was stated, says there are continuing concerns regarding drug and alcohol use in the containment. And I remember it was Commissioner Day who made the comment, and I thought, and I looked at the, the recording, I think it'd be more accurate to say, a commissioner commented that language on prohibitions on drugs and alcohol make it too easy to revoke permits and undermine the purpose of the code. So, or code amendment.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, I think that's what he actually said, and it's a different meaning. So, and it's a shame he's not here, but I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
Go ahead. So, this is why I read my post, and really liked that, because that's, I don't think that's what he said. He did say that, he said that the prohibition on drugs and alcohol is an impediment to people. I think that was the extent of his comments.
No, he also said that it was why, I mean, he essentially said it was a bill breaker, that he couldn't support it.
And that's in the minutes.
Yeah, that part is in the minute, but it's not. I mean, I don't have a minute, I didn't get the minutes with me, but, well, I mean, if you want to object to that, you know, that's fine, but it's just a.
Does this mean we have to bring back these notes for approval out of your time?
If the Planning Commission agrees to changes, then you would implement it as intended, and we can bring back the signatures on the question and post them up.
Or, I mean, votes, it's on the table, the votes.
Yeah.
The resolution.
Well, yeah, I guess we're there, we've already segmented, so call for a vote. Whether or not it was changed. I guess that would be without the changes.
Yes, the votes that's on the table is without the changes.
Yeah. So, we'll call for the vote to approve the meeting minutes of July 20, 2022, as presented here.
Is presented by staff?
As presented by staff.
Okay.
Okay, so call for that vote.
Okay. Commissioner Davis, excuse, Commissioner Passenger.
Aye.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen.
Nay.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Nay.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Casino.
Aye.
Three nays.
So, and five ayes, so those minutes are approved as presented by staff.
Point of information.
I'm sorry?
Aye, point of information.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think I might have seen the most recent meeting minutes in the mailed physical packet, but I can't find them anywhere in electronic form, on the website, or on the emails that were sent out. Is there a way to get an electronic copy of those minutes?
So, I got, that's how I got them, was electronically.
Can you tell me what email, what time the email was sent that has them? Do I have to search through? I can't find them.
I got them yesterday. Just to me.
Okay. I'll double check, thank you.
So, is there a.
Is that a request to have some sent to you, Commissioner Passenger?
Yes, please, if possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask which set.
Yes, and that's for the, the meeting minutes from the 20th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for clarification.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, we'll move on to, I'm three on our agenda of public communication. And I don't know, oh, we might have somebody online, so we'll go through this. Those participating via Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, you will be prompted to, you'll be promoted to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. This may take a few seconds. Unmute yourself and turn on your camera to be heard or seen. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. There will be a three-minute timer will show on the video screen to help keep track of time. And if you start going, I'll start, I'll start asking you to finish up. So, is there anybody on?
There is. That person has their hand raised.
I can't.
Ursula?
Ursula, you're, you're up for offering testimony to the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Ursula Ullar. Sorry, it took a little while until there is a little screen showing as panelists. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Oh, good, thank you. May I start, or I couldn't hear what you said? Okay. Thank you for having me. My name is Ursula Ullar. I live in the southern part of Thurston County. And I'm here to address you about something that I have already sent an email about, also to the county commissioners. And the topic is, I hope that you know that Washdott is taking two locations in Thurston County into consideration for a new airport. I could tell you a whole lot, but there isn't enough time. You can find plenty of detailed information, all sourced from Washdott on the website called bestlifethurston.com under menu item Local Issues, Mega Airport in Thurston County. The Thurston County Code includes land use and special permit rules for a regional airport, but not for a large commercial international airport and the community around it. A large international mega airport requires 4,600-plus acres, and sites are harder and harder to find. I have been present at the Washdott Aviation Expansion Meetings for nearly two years. I'm well-informed, and mega airport is a huge deal, and it is a complex topic. Normally, nobody at a local government level would deal with anything like this in a lifetime. But a location in Thurston County is more possible than ever before. The information exchanged between Washdott and its Commercial Expansion Work Group points to many needed new rules and regulations. You see, it's not about the airport and its footprint itself, but it is about the area and the community around it. Therefore, I would like to request that you, your commission, that the Planning Commission receive a presentation about the impacts of a mega airport in, on the community from parties other than Washdott to obtain a balanced and objective picture of pros and cons of such a project. And consideration of timely new rules and regulations. I emphasize timely because under the vested right doctrine, such rules and regulations have to be in place before any plans or preliminary permits are filed. So, I request consideration of timely new rules and regulations to maintain the equity, health, and wealth of the local community of up to 10 miles outside of such a potential new airport and its major approach and takeoff paths.
You can finish up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that'd like to offer testimony this evening? Okay, with that, we'll move to the, oh, do we have one more online? Is that Vince Cotton?
Yes.
Vince, you're up. Vince, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I too am speaking on a matter that I have emailed the commissioners. And I think I've corresponded with Christina about concerns, application fees for the county's open space program. I, I, I feel that the, the present application fee is an extremely powerful disincentive for property owners to join that program. Thurston has the highest fee of any populated county in Western Washington. More than double what King County charges. Most of the counties are in the, in the range of $400 to $600. Clark is 400. Pierce is the only other outlier with a $1,200 fee. I'm told that Thurston's application fee is $1,616. I have placed my property in a conservation easement and would very much like to join the program. I have priority species, you know, on my site, and I'm just reluctant to go forward with the application. I would like to urge the commission and the county to, you know, provide some kind of mitigation for the fee. Potentially waive it for properties with conservation easements on them. It's, at my age, I'm 75 years old, it will, given that the, if I go in the program, I don't see any tax benefits until the third year after I enter it. Who knows if I'll, I'll still be around at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the Planning Commission? Seeing nobody here, we'll move to the boardroom and we'll start with Kristi White.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for letting me address you again this evening. I have three things that I want to talk to you about this evening, and, and the first two are actually an echo of the previous folks who presented regarding the airport. I lived under Sea-Tac Airport's flight pattern for most of my adult life until I was in my twenties, and I can tell you, having a 747 Airfreighter fly over your house at four o'clock in the morning, and I was a good 10, 15 miles out from the airport with that flight pattern. So, it is something to consider, not only the footprint of the airport, but also the surrounding areas that are impacted by it. And secondly, on Mr. Cotton's comments too about fees, you know, as our land gets gobbled up for, for building and, and to be able to keep areas conserved and in open space, anything that can be done to help mitigate those fees, I think is, is something to look at. And then, the third thing I wanted to talk to you about this evening was the forest conversion, A25 ordinance that is coming before you, and encourage all of you to, you know, look at that, that plan to make it as easy for foresters to keep their property in forest land. And also encourage that forest practices, if the land is logged, that it's done ecologically and sound with, with minimal, you know, clear cutting and, and all of those things to try and help keep that forestry land in an ecologically positive arena. Because there, it's, you know, the more forest we can keep, the better, in my opinion. So, with that, that's what I had to address you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address us? All right. Well, with that, we'll be on our agenda to continue business, or new, new business, I'm sorry, for the work session on A25, the updated forest conversion ordinance.
Yes. Well, I'm excited to be back on a new topic. Let me just share my screen here. And do the commissioners online have access to a screen where they'll be able to see this? Because there is a map that I'll be referring to. So, for the record, I'm actually, I'm with the Community Planning Team here at Nurse and Card. I do appreciate you all taking the time to learn more about the county's healthy forest project and discuss concepts or refreshing the forest conversion ordinance. So, tonight, we'll spend a little time talking about the county's current policies and regulations for forest conversions and tree protection. Then I'll share the board's approved project scope and timeline. And finally, we'll get to dive into the forest conversion ordinance, which is Thurston County Code Chapter 17.25. So, what do our current provisions look like? So, at a policy level, the county is charged with protecting working forest lands, improving climate resiliency, and enhancing tree canopy. These policies get implemented through codes at both the state and local level. Here in Thurston County, you'll find our forest conversion standards in Chapter 17.25, while additional tree protection provisions are sprinkled throughout other parts of the development code. You can find our open space landscaping, low impact development standards in the zoning chapters, and the shoreline master program and critical areas ordinance include standards for tree retention and replanting in our sensitive environment areas. There are further standards for tree protection housed in the drainage design and erosion control, like our BMPs for stormwater management and low impact settlement. So, that's kind of the current landscape. So, the Healthy Forest Project represents a culmination of board priorities throughout the years. Updating the forest conversion has been, or forest conversion ordinance has been on the topic since 2009 with the intention to clarify provisions and permit processes. In 2020, the board had a review of the county's tree protection standards to reflect more current comprehensive plant policies and work around climate mitigation. And earlier this year, the board approved a more detailed scope for the project, which now includes four integrated planning efforts. I'll try to quickly go through those. The first planning effort, which we're going to dive into tonight, is the forest conversion ordinance. As part of this phase, in addition to updating the code, we're also working with Thurston Regional Planning Council to analyze our past permit data, and there's a lot of it, and identify areas at highest risk of conversion in coming years. The second phase is focused on a deep, deeper analysis of our forest canopy. This is actually in partnership with the City of Olympia. We received a DNR grant to do a full-on land cover analysis to better understand the extent and composition of, of our forest resources. And this new land cover data set will be a useful resource for ongoing water, basin-level planning, climate mitigation, habitat conservation, as well as the voluntary storage program. The third phase is focused on growing our forest canopy. So, once the land cover analysis is complete, we'll be looking to update county tree protection standards for rural areas. That would be probably Titles 18 and 20, as well as reviewing forest conservation programs with the aim of growing and restoring healthy forests. And last but not least, the final phase will involve updating our urban forest management provisions, and this will happen as part of the joint code update. And that would be Lacey, Olympia, and Tom Water, and those are slated to begin in 2023, following the completion of the joint plans. Any questions about just the project scope and time? Are we getting to the fun forest conversion stuff? Yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was looking at a presentation you gave early, which you just door, wire and advisory point. And that, you, you had a slide defining healthy forests. And my question is sort of, it will be more detailed later, but what, what is the scope of issues that this large project is trying to address? Is it mostly about how to keep forests that we have healthy? Is it about how to prevent forest loss? You know, what's the overall goal?
I mean, I think I would tie it back to the comprehensive plan policies and the initiatives in the climate mitigation plan, and those would be, you know, protecting our rural land uses, which are working forest lands, and trying to help small forest landowners and forest operators continue in their forest operations. And then, but then also focusing on improvement resilience to climate change, and forests play a big part in that. They have a lot of ecological value and sequester a lot of carbon. And then, another policy in the comprehensive plan is enhancing the tree canopy across both urban and rural areas. And so, those policies weren't necessarily in place when the forest conversion ordinance and other, other chapters of development code were written, but trying to bring those to mind. And so, and helping, helping to be defined a lot of rates, rate wars, because, you know, how do we keep those trees healthy and keep our forest operator, forest operation healthy? So, moving on, so now we're getting, we're getting 17.25. This is where there's a lot of detail, so feel free to stop and ask questions. So, our focus on first days is on forest conversions. Forest conversions are just one of four different kinds of forest cutting permits here in Washington State. A forest conversion is one hundred percent taken out of forestry use and converted to another use, like residential. The other forest cutting permits are overseen by the Department of Natural Resources, and the county has very limited jurisdiction. Forest cutting permits issued by the state are intended, you know, for your commercial forest operators or small forest landowners. They're generally low cost, I think the permits run about a hundred bucks, and they're, they're faster to get. Rather than applying local critical area ordinances, the state applies its own critical area regulations, really focused on protecting salmon. And they are more convenient. Once a permit is issued from the state, it does include for forestation requirements within three years and a six-year development moratorium. In contrast, the county's forest conversion permits are intended for property owners that want to convert their land to another use. The permit costs are set to recoup staff review time, so they are more, and these permits often take long process because they involve applying local fire protection, and in the case of urban growth areas, there might be a concurrent development application, and they get from today. So, as we look into the county's forest conversion regulations, they are broken out into two categories. We've got inside the North County Urban Growth Areas, and then the remaining rural areas, the smaller city urban growth areas. So, inside the North County UGA's, property. So inside the North County UGA's, property owners need a forest conversion permit if they want to disturb more than five thousand square feet of forested area. Applicants are required to have a concurrent development application. If it's a residential subdivision, then there's also a requirement to set aside five percent of the forested area in a separate tree tract. And this would go toward the open space requirements in the subdivision. And you plant one tree for every four thousand square foot of lot area in the residential lot being created. If it's a multi-family industrial or commercial development, then applicants need to submit a tree preservation plan. And they're encouraged to preserve significant trees on site. If you go outside the North County urban growth areas, property owners need to get a forest conversion permit. They're removing more than five thousand four feet, so not square feet, four feet of lumber, which is about two logging truck loads in a twelve-month period, and their property is greater than two acres in size. There's different thresholds and different permit requirements. So now let's get into the moratorium. So the state forest cutting permits come with a six-year development moratorium. However, there are options to release the property from a moratorium. So in Thurston County, we have three different permits that someone can get if they want to waive a moratorium on their on their land. The first one is it is, I should have said release because waiver is relevant. So the first one is an actual waiver from the moratorium requirements if the parcel's more than twenty acres and no more than two acres is going to be set aside for a single family home. So it's just a waiver for single family homes. The applicants do have to demonstrate that the harvesting and reforestation of the property complied with the state forest practices act. The second is an administrative release for single family homes on less than twenty acres or if it the harvesting cannot comply with the state forest practice act. In this case, applicants must demonstrate they didn't attempt to avoid county forest conversion requirements and that any environmentally sensitive area wrought damage during harvest or that such damage can be restored. The last one's a hearing examiner release from moratorium. And they're pretty much for any project that isn't a single family home. Any questions about conversion standards or moratoriums and the release permits?
I, I, just so there, so the six-year development moratorium applies to any state cutting. The the state has, if I applied to the state for to clear, well, I was going to say clear cut, then it
Harvest.
And then technically reforest. So within that six years, could I just go, well, I've decided I want to build on it? And then I don't have to reforest it all, or does that make sense?
So you essentially would come in for a release from the moratorium. Pretty much. You, you got it. So that is happening. It's actually more often, someone, a forest operator might come in, harvest, and then sell the property. And then maybe a new property owner may come in for a release from the moratorium. Let's say to build a single family home. They are stuck fulfilling the state forest practice rules or application requirements from that forest permit from the state. So reforestation, restoring in critical areas. So, yeah, that that is, that is possible under the current. I would say more often than not, but it does, it it does happen. And we can, the next slide is actually kind of what other counties do. And there are two counties in particular in Western Washington that recently updated their moratorium releases to try to address that concern that, you know, at least making whoever cut the trees or harvested the trees comply with the permit requirements of DNR.
If there's some kind of strength of that, I would report that.
You are jumping me ahead. There, I got some ideas. Yeah.
If you clarify for me, I I it's not clear to me. So how is, where is the decision point as to whether it's a state or or this that applies?
The so the moratorium release applies to essentially like the, so the state permits are, I plan to harvest, I plan to replant, I plan to harvest at some point in the future. So you're keeping it in forest operations. This, and so the moratorium release applies. It also applies if you cut without a permit and you're caught. And so it applies from the date that the cutting was done. The conversion is, and there's the forest conversion, there's also something called a conversion option harvest plan, which I didn't, I didn't want to confuse this too much, but there are two options essentially where you can say, hey, I would like to develop in the future. I'm going to come in for a forest conversion permit. The state used to, used to actually look at those, but they wanted the counties to start looking them at them so they could apply local critical areas regulations and things like that.
Okay, so now I'm more fully understanding of your
Yes. Okay. It's, they're both in the same chapter. So you've got pieces of the forest conversion chapter that really tied to kind of the the state forest cutting permits. And then you have pieces that apply to the actual foresting permits that we in the county issue. So what do other counties do? So I really like looking at what other counties do. During the comparative analysis, but so I didn't find any that broke out forest conversion permits by inside or outside of UGA, sort of forest conversion permit for all rural areas and urban growth area, urban growth areas. Some counties like Pierce and Waltham do require concurrent development applications for all forest conversion permits. Or they apply restrictions on future development if there isn't one. So it's like, oh, if you don't know essentially what you're going to do, we'll limit how much you can cut. Pierce, Pierce County also ties their forest conversion requirements to their updated tree protection regulations. So they're protecting significant or legacy trees and requiring replanting. In terms of the moratoriums, I didn't find a lot of waivers necessarily. Kits out in their most recent update to the forest conversion ordinance is only allowing moratorium releases for public utility or capital facility projects. Pierce allows releases for single family homes once a DNR forest cutting permit has been closed. So essentially like a three-year, minimum three years, because that's when all of the conditions are supposed to be put in place. Or they allow someone to come in and say, hey, guess what? They finished everything. Permit got closed after a year and not three years. And they could, they would still be eligible to apply for that. Other counties, they attach additional restoration requirements if any critical areas or buffers were damaged during the harvest. So I found counties that were like, if if a harvest took place and there was more and they, and you're coming in for a moratorium release, if any critical area buffers were damaged, you don't just have to restore them, you get a double buffer that has to be in place. There, there are also a few counties that restricted the home site acreage to one acre rather than two. So if you want a moratorium release, you can only only put that home site on one acre and you'd still have to reforest the remaining, remaining piece of that property. So this is the map. So, in addition to looking at what other counties do, as I mentioned, we're working with the Thurston Regional Planning Council. And we had them analyze Thurston County's historical permit data for all of our forest conversions, forest cutting permits. The colors are going to matter probably the most. And and then looking sort of into the future. So if we could, we could try to get a picture of where worse conversions are going to happen. So looking at that map and really focusing on the colors, the areas in green are parcels that are either in long-term forestry or parks and open space zoning or owned by an entity like DNR, West Forest Service. The areas in purple are parcels that are in one of the special tax programs for open space or forest lands. The areas in orange are parcels with more than five acres of forest. So what you see up there is the full parcel. It might not all be forested, but they have at least five acres of forest. So essentially, what you're looking at are different layers of forest protection we have in the county. The green being the most protected and orange being the least protected as we look into the future. A preliminary analysis of the data, like the actual permit data synced up with sort of where we lost forested acreage is that it looks like long-term forestry zoning is doing what it's supposed to do. It's protecting working forest lands. And the special tax program saw significantly lower percentage of forest acre loss. So it seems like it, those are working to incentivize landowners to keep their properties in forestry use. The other thing we found those when looking at past permit data, the majority of forest conversion permits are happening on parcels zoned County RRR one five. And sixty percent of the forested acres lost between nineteen ninety-six and twenty sixteen also occurred in that zone. And this story doesn't change when we look into the future. Most of the orange parcels that you see are also zoned RRR one five and located outside UGA. So we have a lot more protection for trees and replanting requirements inside UGA's. But when looking at the map, the opportunity for forest conversions are actually outside. This, I will let you know, this is all draft. It is preliminary analysis. And I'm happy to answer the questions I can, but this is like hot off the presses within the last two weeks that we're getting this stuff in and trying to understand what it means. But I thought this map in particular was kind of good to share. So now some ideas are concepts that I really appreciate your feedback on as we're putting together a package of code amendments or a a new forest conversion ordinance. I do want to reiterate that the comprehensive plan policy, that the county's goal is to support working forest lands. So we're not trying to present concepts here that would limit people's ability to harvest trees for commercial purposes, including small forest landowners that we know supplement their income through regular forest operations. These ideas would only apply to properties being taken out of forest use and converted to something else. So for conversion requirements, we're looking at some ideas like simplifying the forest conversion ordinance and having one set of standards apply for both inside and outside an urban growth boundary. And this is a request from our current planning section. It is confusing, especially when you've got five thousand square feet inside UGA and five thousand board feet outside UGA. The, also looking to have a concurrent development application for all forest conversion permits. This might help avoid speculative clear cutting, like I'm going to clear cut and then send to a, sell to a developer. They don't, that person might have just wanted it for one home and not necessarily, you know, all the trees cut. And we could also work with those applicants to identify trees that could be protected during the development if we know what that development looks like. I will say with this one, if they don't have a concurrent development application, that conversion option harvest plan term I mentioned, that is another avenue for them that allows them to cut currently up to thirty-five percent of the trees on site and still not have a moratorium. So there would be another avenue when we dive into details, we can sort of explore that more. And then you're keeping in mind the board's interest in tree protections and the initiatives in the climate mitigation plan. You would like to explore having some tree protections for our larger older trees that are doing the most work on site to manage water, absorb our carbon dioxide, sequester carbon and provide habitat and shade. This could be in addition to or in one of the required tree tracks, required tree tracks are just one, one piece of the site and it might, might be in our best interest working with developers to identify significant trees throughout the site. And then if that, if it didn't work, it wasn't, let's say it's not feasible for a given project, having replanting requirements to ensure future canopy growth and being able to identify areas on that development site where it makes sense.
Is there a difference between a tree and a legacy tree?
I think that's, it's open to, it's going to be open to definition. So the way Pierce County does it is they, they don't just have like a one-size-fits-all. Different trees are significant at different sizes and ages. And so I would imagine we do the the same things. They they also have like point systems where it's like, okay, for the whole site, we want, you have to get to a hundred points. And this fir here, this, you know, beautiful fir is with fifty points. And then you've got, you know, an assemblage of other trees that would add up to that other fifty. And if you didn't, then you have to plant in new trees that might only be worth two to four points instead of that, that large of trees. So there are different ways to structure that, but there is a lot of flexibility there and there's a lot of new work being done, especially looking at sort of the the value of trees and climate adaptability. So giving a long list of trees, like depending on what the goals of that developer or property owner are long-term. So what do you think about these concepts for forest conversion before we moratorium, moratoriums? Is this something that you'd want us to include in a package of code? Ideas like this, additional ideas?
So I just, the only question I have looking at this, you said it was a request from county staff that we have the same inside and outside of UGA's.
In, in, for, in terms of the simplification of it, yes, I do think
But in everything, we have, all three cities in the north have different requirements.
They do have different requirements, especially when it comes to like trees at the time of development, like landscaping, space, things like that. Forest conversions usually are pre-developed. We could still entertain doing inside, outside UGA. I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious how the county commissioners have seen it. Because in the past, there's been resistance even to making all the UGA's the same because they don't want to offend the separate cities, you know, they have, they want to do it. And I've always argued there, yeah, there's some room for differences. But wouldn't it be easier for staff and for people if the UGA's, even, I'm not even talking about outside, inside and outside because I think there's a difference, there's enough difference between rural and urban to say there's, they shouldn't be different. But, I mean, I'll bet you if you pulled this whole room, most people wouldn't know how to draw the boundaries of each of the cities on a map.
I will say that the fourth phase of the project with the joint code updates will be looking a lot more closely at what those tree protection provisions or tree planting provisions, you know, yeah, what they look like for the
ourselves by doing something within the UGA's now that would just get updated during JP one through three?
It could be that we we set something up so that we're referring to existing sections of those zoning chapters, knowing that they might change, the references might change or the provisions in those sections might change in the future.
Yeah, I want to go for ten thousand foot level. So I want, I mean, I have, I guess, a couple of questions. One is, you know, this, when you say, you know, do we want to include this in the package? It seems to me, one of the questions I came tonight with was, I mean, this particular look at Chapter seventeen twenty-five is just one sliver of the larger project. And so I really want to, you know, I want to really understand what this chapter is a lot more to understand how it relates to these other elements. So I don't feel like I'm, you know, I'm there yet because I haven't, you know, read it and come to understand it. I I want to partly understand for us, you know, us looking at this, we're just looking at eight twenty-five, right? I mean, or what is the extent of what you want us to do? Because your timeline says that it's part of a larger process. And I'm especially a little bit confused about, for instance, you have the TRPC doing some groundwork, you know, our, how much does that inform what we're doing? And at the ten thousand foot level, I guess what I'm getting to is that it seems like whatever we do, what we want is to do the most effective thing to protect the trees and the people wanting to keep it in forest, right? Want to make it most valuable for them to be able to use the land in that way. And not, I am assuming that the goal is to try to limit conversion. But, you know, so that's a, that's a confusion I have. I mean, are we trying to make it less difficult to convert? Are we trying to make the conversion experience better for the trees as the conversion happens? Or are we trying to limit conversion in the first place? So, you know, that's, that's kind of a question. And then in terms of inside or outside UGA's, you know, if you're looking at it from a science point of view, you're looking at it from the, what the maps tell us about where the greatest threats are. It seems to me that's the basis that you want to It seems to me that's the basis that you want to make your decisions about where it applies. I mean, I, I think probably what you're going to find is that the problem is really. And those maps kind of showed it. The problem is most severe along transportation corridors. There's kind of a link to transportation and highways. That's a place where you not only have the conversion, you have fragmentation. So uh, you know, so it seems like there's some bigger, I mean, that's why I asked the question, what are we trying to do here? Because it seems like our answers are going to be based on what we're trying to do. Um, and I, so I'd like more clarity about that. It seems like we get some of that clarity from. Uh, from what the analysis shows is the biggest kind of threat areas are, I guess, for the next. Twenty years, you know, past history doesn't necessarily tell us that, but it kind of looks like it goes along the transportation corridors. But I don't know. So, so I have a lot of questions just about the, the context of what we're trying to do. You know, they're, they're just questions. I just, I'm at this point, I'm a bit confused about that, I guess, and want to understand more.
I mean, the guidance I have is the projects the board gave us as well as what's in our conference plan. And the initiatives on my communication plan. And so I don't, I don't have anything. And then just trying to better understand, better understand what was conversion ordinance itself and the history of it, how it's being used. Um, and what, and based on how it's been used, what does that look like, you know, in terms of changes to, changes to Thurston County? Um, I mean, I think the comp plan states that supporting working forest lands is important. But we also have to accommodate residential development and a lot of the orange parcels on that map were RRR one five. And so I don't think it's stopping conversions, um, but you know, it's being more thoughtful about when they do happen. Are there things that we can do to try to preserve more trees? Be more creative, working with developers, um, finding those points of flexibility. So that's, that's the best answer I have at this moment. In terms of looking at transportation corridor, like doing additional analysis, that's what. This is, like I said, kind of fresh off the, fresh off the presses. We haven't like, I haven't applied additional layers. Or anything to see how, how those things connect, but I, I'm not sure, I'd have to think about how that would be integrated into a development code. Versus how you would use it to do outreach, you know, or.
Well, I'm not thinking, I mean, I'm thinking more in terms of when you're, I mean, not necessarily how you integrate it into the code, but how it. How it frames what you're trying to do with changing the code.
Direction do you want us to send you then, or what direction are you taking from us?
Uh, so I'm in, so I've done a lot of informational interviews with different agencies and stakeholders. And so, and so a lot of these ideas you see are, like, they just, they reflect um those interviews and work with stakeholders. And so I'm looking for direction from the planning commission that if I'm drafting up these code amendments. Are these ideas, especially from the conversion requirements, more term releases that you would like me to include in that package of code amendments? And so it'd be great to sort of get a, get a, this isn't a vote, but like.
See those kind of things in there. I think so. I think that. Can use it to help me protect these forests, so, yes.
Okay. Could you send us kind of the, you know, what you're kind of working on though?
I, I actually have a little like, yes, I have additional information I can send that just summarizes the policies, the code section. So if you want to do your own study of the code, you can use that as a guide. Um, so the more, I know we're running out of time, so the more term releases, you hit on Commissioner Simmons. The idea would be similar to Pierce County, um, looking to limit the eligibility. Um, only on single family homes coming for more. But only once that DNR forest cutting permit is closed. Hopefully this will help ensure that the reforestation has been done by the person who actually harvested the trees. Took out the permit rather than shifting the burden to a new property. Um, if you, if that sounds tenable, that's how I draft it. If you want to go, like go beyond that to, you know, Kitsap County, only for public facility, public utilities, capital facilities. Could also go in that direction. That's the, that was the most limiting one I had found when I ended my research.
But I think that, I, I think that we need to have provisions for housing. Um, and I'm good with that, but I'm, I certainly don't want to see that this happening for commercial developments and that kind of thing. Uh, anymore than, than we need. So I don't know if that's enough direction for you to move forward with.
I mean, well, how does, yeah, everyone.
I guess, I just have some questions about it because you, what you just said about the new owner not having responsibility. You, when you buy a piece of property, you know if it's under this moratorium, so.
What they market that, you don't.
But they came in for a permit to do that land. And if their three-year mark came up, because it hadn't been planted yet with somebody from the county, would there be a permission? County or we'd come up and say, we just bought this land and you guys had three years, get new trees on here and you did.
Yeah, it'd be DNR with the forest cutting permits, but if they came in for a more term release, there are conditions that would be in place.
Okay.
As part of that. And then I couldn't help throw out some opportunities. So in addition to, you know, the managing forest conversions, I also wanted to highlight that we could try to incentivize things like. More tree preservation or replanting than the minimum required. Um, using climate smart or ecological forest practices when they are doing harvest for the conversion. Um, or participating in a broader regional reforestation effort, which I, you know, might be coming down the pipeline. With things like the climate mitigation plan implementation. Is that, do any of those resonate with the commissioners? Are there other things, other opportunities?
I can leave anything to set aside, to set aside. I, I think anything we could do is encourage more trees is, is all.
Yeah, I, I'm just a little confused about the fact that this is that, this is specifically about conversion now. So it's like you have to, so I, I guess that's what I'm getting a little stuck on is like, I agree and I would kind of prefer. I mean, you know, the, the ideal is to make growing trees the most valuable thing to do, right? To keep, keeping the trees, growing the trees and having living trees as opposed to chop down trees and then bear land to sell. You know, you want to make the trees the most valuable thing about the property and you want to make people want to keep the trees. So in a way, you kind of want them to not decide they want to convert the land. So I guess that's one of the things I'm getting stuck on.
I think it, what my hope is that conversion is even just taking a twenty acre parcel. But cutting down trees on more than two of those acres to put a house in. And that doesn't necessarily mean that the other eighteen acres. So divorced.
There, I guess, I get just to, I mean, just to plant a little question, you know, not that I disagree with any of this discussion. But we also have climate change and I'm starting to wonder if we want to encourage people to put houses. Um, next to trees in the sense that it may turn out that further study of, you know. Wildfire risk and that kind of thing, climate change will make this something that we don't really want to encourage. You know, like that, that forest, urban. Residential interface may be something that actually should just be discouraged altogether. Wildfire risk.
Can I have a comment?
Go ahead, Commissioner Halverson.
Okay, uh, well, first I'd like to just start out by saying this is a great overview. Uh, this is a starting point. This is, looks like it's going to be about a two-year process and I think.
Two, I was thinking two months.
If you can go back to your next slide, Ashley, your previous slide.
Oh. That, that was my attempt. I'll do it just here.
I, I personally think that these, uh, these ideas are, are great. I think there might be some more additions to them as we move forward, but I think it's a good starting point. Uh, I think you've done your homework and talking to the other counties and getting some ideas to develop these. So I personally think it's a good starting point and obviously we've got a lot more time for discussion to get the, the finer details of it. So thank you for your effort in putting this together.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I guess, I'm in the same place that Helen is. I, I, I can't get my hands around some reason. Is, is, is your presentation online or was it sent out with a packet?
Um, I did, it's online.
I can't see it here, so it, it helps me to have it in front of me.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's hard to follow, so I just need, I need to get a grip on it and I, I, right now I don't.
And that's understandable. It, it'll be back.
I like this leaning more and more towards the Kitsap way than the other ways.
Okay.
All right.
Looking at your list of stakeholders, you might want to contact the Washington Forest Association.
I, they, yes, they are on my list. I get all their newsletters. I actually have a very long list of stakeholders. I'd be happy to share that.
Thank you very much, Ashley. With that, we're running way behind, but we're going to catch up a little bit. And we have a work session and recommendations hopefully on the wireless code update with Caitlin Nelson. And I think we have Chin Philman here as well too, if we need more guidance.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. Okay, at the last work session, when the wireless code update was discussed on July twentieth. Uh, the planning commission requested two changes to the draft code. The first was for readability of the complete code by including the section on hearing examiner approval within the special use chapter. Um, of the zoning code for approval authority. There were no changes to this code from what is in our existing code. Uh, it's just for readability. The other change is part of a sentence applicable to where of several requirements within the application requirement section of the wireless communication chapter. This edit to the draft removes the language or is otherwise not needed for review for compliance with this chapter. At that point, uh, those were the only requests I received. Uh, so you took receipt of a. Draft motion for recognition and that is on the screen currently. Are there other questions that need to be answered at this time?
Is there anybody else that has anything to say on this that hasn't already been said? All right, well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I believe that the last meeting, uh, made a comment and asked it to be specifically included and noted in the record. And I finally did get the June, July twentieth meeting minutes and it's not included in there. So I looked up our procedure rules and in section thirteen B one. It specifically states that if a commissioner asks for something to be included in the record, that it will be. Um, can I just confirm that we will be practicing that rule and procedure?
Uh, sorry, are you specifically asking about the meeting minutes from July twentieth?
Yeah. Well, at this point, I'm asking about whether we're following that procedure.
He's going to have to repeat himself.
Can you please say that one more time, Commissioner? Your request.
My request is asking whether or not we're following the rule of procedure, section thirteen or B one. Wherein it states that if we have a, if a commissioner asks for something to be noted for the record. It will be included in the meeting minutes.
Best of my knowledge, yes. Thank you for clarifying what your note had been to include that was not. Is that, is that applicable to what may or may not be addressed?
Yeah, I, I had asked for it to be included in the minutes that I believe that the. Discussion raised by folks in the public comments period. Uh, about wireless facilities had been asked to be covered by planning commissioners, asked to be further researched. And um, there was disagreement about that, but I felt that it was.
And you want to make sure that's reflected in the record um as.
Well, it's too late for that, but I just.
We haven't approved the July twentieth meetings. Oh, we, oh, that's right, we did, I'm sorry.
I thought we did.
But the.
And it's okay for the minutes. I just want to know if we're going to practice that going forward.
I guess I don't understand.
Yeah.
If we request it to be included in the minutes in the future, will that happen in the future?
So the audio is the official minutes and it is in the audio. Um, I don't have the minutes in front of me, so I can't review what is in the written out summary. That was provided for the July twentieth meeting minutes. Is it just a summary? But I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, the, the audio is the official meeting record, so they would be fair. And that would, that would satisfy rule thirteen B one, unless I'm misunderstanding something. Go ahead.
Is the point that.
What's the difference between the official record and meeting minutes?
So the audio is the official meeting minutes and slash record, depending on which. Or actually if you want to use there, what we provide the planning commission is a summary of the previous meeting. Um, not full meeting, traditional meeting minutes. Because the planning commission has chosen to use the audio as the official record in meeting minutes that we go back to. For any review or decisions.
And I, I think that's actually in the laws. That it's, it refers to tapes, I think. But as long as there's a permanent recording, it isn't just YouTube.
It is a permanent recording, correct?
Yeah. Should we call these meeting notes instead of meeting summary?
Confusion?
Yes.
We can rename somewhere.
But, well, that's another topic and it kind of goes back to having earlier suggested that maybe we reviewed those. You know, so let's not go down that rabbit hole, but I, I want clarification. I mean, I think the issue is, is that. The point is the point that there are things that there were requests of the planning commission to look at. That it hasn't looked at as requested and yet we're waiting for a resolution. Is that the point?
That's definitely one of my concerns.
Okay, just trying to clarify that. All right.
Okay, well.
And I would like to know, I guess, are there further concerns? Because we're voting.
I guess, go ahead. In, in the past, when we have had issues of points of view that we wanted to get in front of. The rest of the commissioners, we wrote them out and handed them to, so that we could discuss them. But I don't feel like I have that list. I have a stack of notes that I took during testimony. And, and Jim, you and Kevin were at that task force, right? So, so you heard.
Yeah.
Relation from that, which we, so we got a letter from each side of it and we looked at those. You know, I guess if, if, if someone wants me to consider something specifically, they need to submit it and not talk in generalities during the meeting. And that's the way I feel it is. There's just generalities. And I listened to what people said and made a decision.
I, I would like to also make the point that, that I don't think that there are any points of view that are not being heard. Either through our regulations or my reports or our videos. So if there is a point of view that's not being heard, it's because it hasn't been brought up. So I don't know where to go with this. I don't know where to go with that concern from here other than I think. So I don't know where to go with this. I don't know where to go with that concern from here other than I think it might be a daunting issue at this particular point. And we do, I am entertaining a question.
I would recommend approval of development code docket item eight nineteen wireless communication facilities, which repeals and replaces chapter twenty point three three wireless communication facility and antenna support structures and immense chapter two zero point zero three structure interpretation and definitions and chapter two zero point five four special uses.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? We call for the vote?
Mr. Davis, excuse Commissioner Peskinger.
Nay.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Nay.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Nay.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye. We have five, five ayes and three nays and one absence of the motion of recommending approval of the development document item eight nineteen wireless communication facilities, which repeals and replaces chapter twenty point three three wireless communication facilities and antenna support structures and immense chapter twenty point zero three structures interpretation and definitions and chapter twenty point five four special uses. The motion is passed. Thank you very much. We will be looking for a minority report on that. This was a very close and contentious vote, so I hope that we have a robust minority report that could go on this. This recommendation, minority reports are usually due Monday after the vote has been taken, so I hope that Commissioner Peskinger, are you going to pen the minority report?
I intend to, yes.
That would be great. I don't know if you can coordinate with the other signers. I would assume that that'd be Commissioner Wheatley and Commissioner Hanson, and maybe Commissioner Day would have some input on that as well. If you need help communicating with those folks, please ask.
I think you have to be pressed.
Thank you.
So we just, I thought we decided that.
We haven't decided that. We haven't discussed, decided that.
I I thought we did decide that you could sign it even if you weren't present for the vote, because we'd like Commissioner Hanson. We'd like Commissioner Hanson in on eight twenty seven.
That was a situation.
Was it? Are we not allowed to do that then?
It will be discussed.
Okay.
Well, at the very least, we have three commissioners that want to sign on to the minority report that Commissioner Peskinger is gonna put together. So please, if you need help coordinate that, please ask Caitlin to help, and it'd be great if you had it in on Monday, and if something comes up, please communicate with her so that way that all can go together at the time. Caitlin, do you need anything else from the planning commission on this particular issue?
I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Philman.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're gonna.
Commissioner, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Just clarify. I mean, it may not be a natural issue with this because Commissioner Day didn't vote, so we don't know how he feels about it or what he wants to do.
But you want you want this as an issue.
But yeah, we probably need to sort of stick it on our list of things to do.
I I'm putting that on the thing that we will address that specifically, yeah. But just not the second. Right. Okay. Well, we are gonna move on to more continuing business with item number three, work session on Shoreline Master Program with Senior Planner Fobus.
Commissioner Fobus. Planning. So this will be the eighty first work session on the Shoreline Master Program since the update of the planning commission back in twenty seventeen. The planning commission will continue to ask questions and provide feedback to help shape the final SMP recommendation to board commissioners working through changes of documents since the public hearing on October twenty twenty one. So we'll be getting where we left off in chapter nineteen six hundred. I'll go ahead and share the screen.
Just a real quick question.
Yeah.
Just sorry. Net pens. I there were, there was like a net pen hatchery in Rochester. Is that gone?
How did you get a net pen in Rochester?
It was a hatchery, but it was run by a net pen. It was, it was a net pen cook, you know, who yeah, behind that whole leakage thing.
I'm not sure how SMP would have jurisdiction on.
Okay, but it well, the reason I ask is just because. Yeah, there's the river, and then there's also the, you know, it's a presence of that. I mean, I just want to be safe. I don't want to leave something out if there's a reason to have it in. That's all. But is that still operative?
Now, I do not know.
Okay.
I don't know if it's still operative, but if any activities that are occurring within shoreline jurisdiction that are aquaculture would be covered by the standards in the SMP.
But it would be an exclusive use if it was in operation.
Correct.
Right. It's your concern is you don't want any more.
Yeah.
Net pens.
Right. I mean, if they're already present in the area, there's more risk that it can come in.
Oh, and they're not prohibited. They would not be prohibited of the SMP update, and new net pen operation could come in. It's just that there would not be specific standards guiding that. They would rely on the general standards that cover all aquaculture. In addition to all the other permits they would need to get from state and federal agencies.
I mentioned that chart was that's there.
Or better.
Yeah.
Okay, so there really are not very many takes left in chapter nineteen six hundred to discuss. We left off at six hundred one seventy residential development, but that section has not changed since the public hearing, so I'm gonna move on to one seventy five, which only has, I believe, one word changed. So there are concerns about that. Let me know, otherwise I'm gonna keep going.
Hold on.
Oh, sure.
So we're.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, and one seventy five, which is shoreline stabilization.
Oh.
Um, the only change made since the public hearing was removing a word that kind of conflated soft stabilization with nonstructural. It's not the same thing, so that was a good catch by ecology. I took that out. Similarly, in section nineteen six hundred one eighty, which is transportation, the only change made there was to update the reference to the recreational development section, because as as we've discussed, we changed that so that it's split off in public access, and so that reference.
Just really quick. I saw that the Fish and Wildlife Department had suggested in number one eight. Number eight, it suggested a change of wording from aquatic habitat guidelines to water crossing design guidelines.
To what was the number click should they want?
They wanted water crossing design guidelines. So you might want to just go back.
I can look at that because I I remember that comment or something like that. I thought I had said. Sure. They know the right documents to reference. I thought I made that change, so thank you. I will look at that.
And then I have a question as we're going through, like, because we're gonna get to get up to one nineteen seven hundred. One ten. Just want to start referring to the appendices. Do we talk about the appendices?
We will go through the appendices. Yeah, we're gonna. So yeah, we're gonna go through six hundred, seven hundred, and then go through the appendices and talk about any changes that have happened since since the public hearing.
Chair, moment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Alverson.
Andrew, did you take a look at that page that I left with you and my comments about including the aquatic portions under those different subchapters?
Yeah, I I don't have that with me, but I did look at that based on your comments at the last meeting, and while if you look through it, you can see that some some sections reference the aquatic specifically and some don't. There is a there is a method to that. So if the aquatic, if the permits for the aquatic environment are the same as the underlying or the upland shoreline environment designation, then the aquatic, it's not listed separately. It's just it says that in the text up above. Aquatic is specifically called out only when there is it has a specific permit requirement or it's prohibited. So while you won't see aquatic as a separate line item in every section, there's a there's a pattern and a reason for when it does appear versus when it doesn't appear.
Okay, I I don't necessarily agree with that. I think consistency is important throughout the document, but the page that I left you had more comments than just the aquatic.
Yes, and I could, I don't have that with me, unfortunately. I could run and grab it if we take a short break, but.
Well, yeah, there were some things on there that needed to be included in the document, and I just wanted to make sure they were.
So we, in order. Chair.
Please, please.
Thank you. In order for us to have transparency, we really do need to have those comments presented at a planning commission meeting during the during open regular meeting, not handed to staff or emailed to staff. So Commissioner Halverson, if you have those available, the planning commission can you can provide that to the planning commission. There can be a discussion, but to hand to staff pre or post meeting, that's not in our transparency world.
Well, I, yeah, I fully understand that, and obviously I couldn't be there tonight. I was expecting to be there tonight, but there were about four or five changes in that one subchapter. And they they needed to be included, so.
Commissioner Alverson, can you run through them real quick?
I don't have them because I provided the document to Andrew before I left that night.
I can go quickly see if I can grab it.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, all right. Do that, do that. Time me out right back.
You are recessed.
We are in recess.
Maybe we could do like staff updates. Since he was kind of behind.
Okay, we're back in. Now we're gonna do some staff updates. Thank you very much.
I'm just, yeah.
That's great.
The only staff updates I have for the planning commission is just to make you aware that the Board of County Commissioners had a briefing from staff today on eight twenty seven. That is the noninformed chapter of the critical areas permits. The decisions were made. It was just briefing, and that the board did set a public hearing for the George Open Space Application, and that public hearing will be happening at the end of this month on August.
Okay, and real quickly, then I'll go through our calendar with tentative items for August seventeenth. We will be looking at a CIP, a boundary line adjustment code amendment, and emergency housing ordinance, and maybe the AGCAO amendment. Is there anybody here that is not planning on being here August seventeenth? Looks like everybody should be here. On September seventh, we'll be looking at boundary line adjustment code updates, emergency housing ordinance, updated forest conservation ordinance, and the AGCAO amendment tentatively. Is there anybody that is not expecting to be here September seventh? Looks like we should have a full house for both of those.
Oh, finish.
Uh, that's it for the calendar. Did you have something else real quick to hit?
Well, I mean, we had a public comment tonight, and we've had public comments before, and I've commented myself about the use of the the planning commission or you know, like tonight we had a request that we have a presentation on the airport mega project, she calls it. And we've had a request that we have some kind of report on the process for the comp plan update. So again, you know, this is kind of, I guess, when do we get to say that we would like to suggest agenda items like that and plan for them, because, you know, for example, the comp plan update thing, I would like to be ready to have conversation, you know, as the as the county commissioners are setting next year's agenda. You know, we may want to have some input on that.
So you want to know when the planning commission can tell staff to tell B O C C that we'd like to look at something?
No, I'm saying I'd like to have a conversation about how much lead we have to do to to request of, well, I guess, to to put it to the planning commission to change the the agenda. Dot, you know, the, I don't want to say docket items, because that's not what these are, but but we need to be able to talk with the planning commission about needs that we see, and they can update the calendar for the rest of the year in response to things that we can ourselves tell them we'd like to see. And so, but we need to make space to have conversations about that if that's the way that we want to go.
I think that our process is pretty much well limited. We can ask staff to ask the B O C C when they do their new docket every year, that the planning commission would like to have something done, like we want to just real answer. That was a planning commission request.
Right, that was a formal recommendation.
That was a formal recommendation.
Correct.
And so we could do that once a year or something like that, or how often would we want to do that?
They need to be submitted to staff. We need to have them before November fifteenth.
Okay, so if we had a list of recommendations that we would like to have added to our workflow or docket, have those before November fifteenth, give to staff to bring those to B O C C to see if they will include them.
Well, then we need to develop a process to to develop those things, because otherwise, I mean, people come and they request something like that and just falls in the middle of the floor and goes nowhere, and.
The public can request the same thing through planning staff. Citizen, there's citizen initiated requests all the time as well.
Absolutely. Okay, well, if if somebody like that, Ms. Uller comes and says, I would like the planning commission to have a hearing, or not a hearing, but an information session, a work session on this. What is the process by which we say, okay, let's do that, and then work on when we want to do it? And how we do that, how we interact with the with the commissioners.
Right, so that wouldn't be something that the planning commission would see unless it is docketed by the board of county commissioners. So Ms. Uller or anybody else has requests that they would like to see either in the comprehensive plan changed or in the development code changed, they would do the appropriate or complete the appropriate forms and submit to staff to have specific sections of the comprehensive plan or development code changed. That would be reviewed and provided to the board of county commissioners during our annual or mid-cycle docket review, and the board of county commissioners would make the decision as to if that gets docketed or not. We would then do the staff would then do the research and the stakeholder group and the legwork and bring to the planning commission for their consideration changes to comp plan or development code docket, as you were saying now.
But this is the public, I mean, this is a very, this is not an equitable process. I mean, people come, they don't know these things. They don't know the process. We don't tell them. We don't say, thank you for the input. Now, this, if you want this to happen, this is what you have to do. So I think we really need to talk about this, because people come to us.
And you can refer to staff and we can have a conversation with them.
But we don't. We don't have a way of saying to them. They come and make the comment. We don't say, well, if you're concerned about high water cables, if you're concerned about the airport.
Those those comments do make it into the official record.
Well, I'd say both the people that spoke tonight about the airport said they've already spoken to the board.
Yeah, but they did a specific request of us.
Well, they asked.
She has specific requests.
I think they.
I agree with Commissioner Wheatley.
All right, well, that's something that we can think on, but I think our process right now is fine. We have Andrew back here after retrieving Barry's or Commissioner Halverson's memo, so.
I think it's at home.
Okay.
So I apologize. We don't have those. I do recall, yeah, there's a couple staple pages and had, you know, handwritten notes on it on that residential section, perhaps the shoreline stabilization section. Again, there really have not been changes to that section since the public hearing. The only thing I'm aware of in either of those chapters is one strikeout in the shoreline stabilization, so I would throw that out there. And also that's, you know, other issue, the consistency with the permit requirements, but, you know, I kind of looked at that and.
Yeah, and Andrew, they were, what they were is they were omissions from the document from the table up front that needed to be included to be consistent.
But it was in the text.
Correct.
Well, you'll you'll pick up all that stuff in your final review or formatting.
Yeah, and I do have the comments. I I think I took them home and then did not. Yeah, and I do have the comments, I, I think I took them home and then did not bring them back, so.
We, we have to go through and do an, an editor review of that once we have final document.
Okay. Hopefully that addresses your concern, Commissioner Halverson, and I think we were, we were at one eighty, were we at one eighty?
Uh, yeah, so we are in one eighty, I will go ahead and go back and look at the piece that um, Commissioner Wheatley asked for, because I, that sounds familiar to me, I think that was something I intended to change.
And that makes perfect sense.
Okay, great. Um, again, in that section one eighty, there was one reference that was changed. One eighty-five is utilities and there have been no changes to this section since the, since the public hearing.
Where are we?
Uh, section nineteen six hundred, one eighty-five, utilities. But.
Page one thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
One.
Thirty-eight.
What's, oh, I'm ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that is the last section, that's in chapter nineteen six hundred. There are no questions on, uh, chapter nineteen seven hundred again has had very minimal changes since the public hearing. So I'm just going to open it up as a whole in this chapter, are there any questions on any changes, any strikeout underlined that anyone sees in that document?
Nothing for seven hundred?
Alright, okay, um, appendix A, and I apologize, so on appendix A, I had sent an email out to you all. I told you that there were no changes to that, and next which is the shoreline implementations. I was incorrect, because of course there were changes to this in the public hearing, all the changes that we spent several work sessions working on. So let me please correct that statement and uh, assure you that the changes that this body has asked for uh, are reflected in this appendix A. Okay, so. Uh, okay, so then I will move on to appendix B, for mitigation options section and some changes.
Yeah, I, uh, this, the here and further down, and I'm not sure if they've noted it, but it's on the native vegetation, um, uh, it says the approval authority on native vegetation, and it, it happens to get further down. Yes, a couple places where that comes up. Well, I'm concerned about that. Um, I can understand why, um, it may feel like a good idea not to be totally strict about how it all has to be um, planted in native vegetation, especially with climate change and, you know, there may be situations where native vegetation doesn't make the most sense at this point. However, I think this is too liberal um, and could be kind of open to, um, you know, um, it, it just doesn't, I, I want it stricter and so, um, I like to suggest that a limit placed like five percent um, non-native.
Is this a vegetation? Public hearing?
Yes.
Request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, the planning commission discussed this after the public hearing and asked staff to make allowances for native vegetation to be used in mitigation restoration projects with, with sideboards and so the, the attempt to do that was reflected here saying, uh, it has to provide the same ecological function and mitigation report that outlines that and, you know, that there are no unintended effects, it can't be invasive, exotic or noxious or anything like that. Uh, and there is support for this, um, conceptually from, you know, I know that there's some conservation district staff wrote in support of this and.
Well, I consulted um, conservation district staff and can I just read uh, sort of what maybe a suggestion was, I mean, I don't understand, you know, maybe you've put this somewhere else because you just said there that it may be somewhere else, so just explain to me, because I'm, I'm not comfortable with how open this is. So, um, some wording that was suggested and I'll just read it and see if it sounds reasonable to you. Native vegetation must be used for all shoreline mitigation plantings unless adequate justification is provided for substitution of no more than five percent with non-native vegetation. And then maybe limited to use in areas adjacent to the home site. And then substitutions exclude invasive exotic and noxious species, including those plant species on the watch list. The mitigation plan must include a clear rationale for substitutions describing the services provided by the non-native species. Um, parentheses, ecological and or structural benefits they provide that can't be provided by a native plant in the same place. So it kind of, you know, creates more of a principle, it doesn't say, you know, blanket must always be native, but it puts rails around it and says it's preferred that it be native. But there, there might be times when decision is made that non-native is, is the option.
Yeah, I would throw that question out to the planning commission at large and see how, let you all chew on that and what you think, because this is intended to reflect conversation that happened, but of course, you know, it needs to be tweaked further, um, based on the what this body would like to see, we can certainly do that.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is language I did get in consultation.
I, I discussed, we discussed this in great detail.
Yeah.
And, and we found that finding native plants, buying native plants is very difficult. You can go to a campground once a year and they might have the kind of plant you want. So, given the fact that you can buy lots of plants that have the same function.
They don't though.
Sure they do, they perform the same function. The only reason for native plants is they're natural here and they grow in this environment. That's what they tell us, the justification for native plants is, because they, they survive. Well, if you're planting plants and you're along, you're going to have them survive, because they, they die, they die.
Context, uh, I was, what you were suggesting, like, like, used to have in this, the planning commission um, changed one of the policies upfront in the document that used to say that unless you were otherwise authorized, you had to do it, it was changed to say allow, does provide the same functions and is not noxious or anything like that. Um, so I think that's been like the evolution of this document over time, some, some of the you're talking about were in here, having to have changed.
I would like to see them put back in, in this, you know, this is kind of an evolved version of that and I would like to see it put back.
Might want to make that as a note for minority report.
Okay, or I could make a resolution, I guess, that we, could I do a res?
You, you can make a motion to change it.
Okay, so can I make a motion that we include, that we change that language here and here's another I can't, but where this language is.
There's two, yeah, two places in appendix B and then there's, there is a reference in the uh, policy S H sixteen in nineteen three hundred. That references it as well.
Yeah, so where it's, those places, just that, that we changed the language to what I read.
To the five percent.
To the five percent, not native, um, and then um, substitutions exclude invasive, et cetera.
Alright, is there a second on that motion?
Okay.
It moved in seconded to change those provisions to have a five percent non-native cap, is that fair? Um, call for the vote.
Commissioner Dax, excuse Commissioner Passinger.
Hi.
Mr. Halverson.
I was only able to catch a small portion of what uh, uh, Commissioner Wheatley said, so it's difficult for me to even make a considered opinion or a vote on this.
Are you abstaining?
Or I could read the language since, yeah, you want me to read the language again?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, I'll try to read it really loud. Um, native vegetation must be used for all shoreline mitigation plantings unless adequate justification is provided for substitution of no more than five percent with non-native vegetation. Substitutions exclude invasive, exotic and noxious species, including those plant species on the watch list. The mitigation plan must include a clear rationale for substitutions describing the services provided by the non-native species.
Okay, I guess if there's any discussion on this, Eric, uh, I mean, I'd like to, I mean, I thought we looked at this before and, um, we, I had a resident out at Lake Lawrence that had to plant some vegetation, they had a hell of a time finding uh, native vegetation to plant on the side of their hill.
Commissioner Halverson, yeah, that's the, those were the points that Commissioner Carmen just made.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking for a vote.
Okay, well.
You want a five percent cap or not?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson?
No.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Wheatley?
I.
Commissioner Carmen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
No.
Commissioner Casino?
Name.
I would also add that, um, I, I don't think that the sun has set on this concept, because I have not yet had any comments from ecology on this version of this document, so, um, we shall see, we may get some sort of refinement of this. Uh, I don't know what the board has got to say either, but yeah, it's interesting. Okay. Uh, any other comments on it?
Before we start to get totally off this, could you ask, when you speak on the call, you on this subject, you just ask them, is there, I mean, like ten percent, twenty percent, what are, what are the thoughts on that?
Sure. We are going to do a stat sheet on that, and that's part of the implementation piece. Um, I actually saw some grant funding last year to do that, so that's more coming on that. Okay.
Critically, do you have something else, second, okay?
Any else in appendix B, if not, we'll move on. Appendix C, which is the restoration land, which again, really the only change here was adding some information on this Holy Land Trust as a restoration partner that was not in the document prior, um, so unless there are comments there, I will.
Can you just wait a second, because I have scribbled nothing. I don't have anything specific, I have a lot of comments, but I don't have a specific change.
And again, like, this plan, it's been several years since it's been written, I think we're going to probably be looking at this again once we get our comments, comments from ecology, I expect, so.
Yeah, I think there's a need for more for consideration of climate change here for one thing.
Right, so.
Okay.
B?
I'm sorry?
Are we moving to?
Yes.
Oh, and this was one of the places where the non-native plant or return, oh, no.
We didn't, I started, yeah. So appendix D has not changed, I'm confident of that, that is our um, uh, channel migration zone mapping, which we are working on to update, that, those layers have not changed, we, that work was done a few years ago, in conjunction with ecology. We are going to be creating um, maps that use the latest and greatest shoreline jurisdiction layer, um, so when they're just a public hearing again, that will have a nice new map. Uh, so appendix E is the last piece. I'm going to far, uh, appendix E is our critical area regulations that are incorporated into the SMP by reference. Uh, so there have been some changes to this document, um, but again, incorporating the CAO pieces, none of the CAO language was changed, it was either picked up and plunked in or was permitted with a tag that just said doesn't apply in shoreline jurisdiction and in this document. So are there any questions or comments on appendix?
Does anybody have, online have anything on appendix E?
Um.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Well, I'm just, I mean, it's a big appendix, so we need to take a little bit of time to just make sure, but uh, I do remember that. Uh, yeah, I have this one, one part, the uh, eighteen on purpose, and I would like to have seen uh, some kind of reference to climate. I mean, I'm sort of trying to anticipate the fact that this is coming out just when we're starting to do climate resiliency stuff in comp plan review and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have climate resilience in there somehow.
So, B, this is critical area, so we can't change it without actually going and changing the critical areas.
Right, this, this whole appendix is simply a snapshot of, of the critical area as they exist today, those, those regulations that actually apply in shoreline jurisdiction. So I went to the county code in title twenty-four and seventeen fifteen and literally copied and pasted it all over and then scrubbed it and took out anything that didn't apply essentially. So this is what, what remains and we're not closing any changes to the critical area ordinance language as part of the update, it's just, it's here as reference to, to show you, you know, what's going to apply, because if, when the critical areas on its changes, we're still going to be looking at these pieces in shoreline jurisdiction.
And then wasn't there another part, and yeah, I'm just grabbing a hard, it's, you know, it's like a hundred something page, yeah. The C is not just a little thing.
Yes.
My very, very. Yeah, so, um, but wasn't there some part of it that, and I, I guess I just, you know, it's like we have, I don't know, I wasn't here for the earlier discussion, so I don't know if people thought hard about this and I guess I just wanted to ask if there's a part where it sort of includes a list of like partners and, um, doc, you know, sources and things like that, and it looked to me like it hadn't, it hadn't had any changes over all the years, which didn't seem like that it's since, but maybe it hasn't been changed since the last, um,
Yeah, and there, there might be something in the critical areas, so I wonder if you're thinking about appendix C, which is the restoration plan. Because the restoration plan, uh, by and large, points to existing sources of data to identify degraded sites that might have restoration potential to end that, there's a table of, you know, and conservation entities that might be partners in restoration efforts and, um, probable sources of funds for those things, yeah, that's appendix C.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Well, and what's that, has that been updated over the years or?
Uh, it has, it was put together for the, you know, the twenty seventeen draft of the SMP, uh, I don't know that it's been, I don't think it's been significantly overhauled since then, I know I have not since I took over three years ago. Uh, and that may be something that we get from ecology, they may, give me comment on that, um, I don't know, that, that is something that I specifically want to ask them about because I'd rather know now than go submit it and say, this is not going to work, this is, you know, needs something else added to, refreshed or whatever, so I purposely intend to ask ecology for, let us know what we need to do, if there's any deficiencies in that document.
An, an appendix E is only here to be asked to be here, because in the document it kept referring to all these sections and sections and you said, now you make people go to all these different sources, let's put it in the academy.
Yeah, we incorporate it instead of reference.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is, it's updated, so it's going to be updated in here.
Hmm.
No?
No, if the CAO is updated after this is passed, um, it will require an updated SMP to update it. So we are taking a snapshot in time of, of which critical area applies, but it's going to be based on effective data in the SMP.
But, but that would apply whether it be up, appendix E or not.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's preventing the, you know, the awful task of trying to go back in time and figure out what code provisions applied on which date, which is never fun if you've ever done it. So, yeah, so no, it's, you know, jurisdictions have a couple different options when it comes to critical areas, you can cut and paste into your document, you can reference, you know, an ordinance by number, but it's not never that simple, uh, or you can do an appendix and that's, that's what was chosen yeah, way back at the outset of this project, so.
Do you got any more?
That is all on the SMP.
Well, with that.
Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Halverson.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the draft comprehensive and periodic shoreline master program updates dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, as amended during the planning commissioners' July twentieth and August third, twenty twenty-two work sessions.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Third.
There's actually, well, there's a version that has today's date on it, that, oh, I would go with that.
Okay, but is there any further discussion? Okay, the motion has been made to recommend approval of the draft comprehensive and periodic shoreline master program updates dated August third, twenty twenty-two, as amended during the planning commission's August third, twenty twenty-two work session. Call for the vote?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, that we would need to amend the motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Halverson started out with the July nineteenth.
Yes, I'll restate the motion. Uh, move to recommend approval of the draft comprehensive and periodic shoreline master program updates dated August third, twenty twenty-two, as amended during the planning commission's August third, twenty twenty-two work session.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to recommend approval of the draft comprehensive and periodic shoreline master program updates dated August third, twenty twenty-two, as amended during today's planning commission meeting, August third, twenty twenty-two work session. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Commissioner Day's excuse, Commissioner Pesinger?
Nay.
Commissioner Halverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Nay.
Commissioner Carmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Casino?
Aye. That motion passes five to three. Once again, um, we will, can, I would offer you to do a minority, Commissioner Wheatley to do a minority report. Uh, you don't have to do it, we can ask somebody else to do it. Would you like us to ask somebody else to do it? Is there anybody else that would be interested in?
Please ask, um, first ask Commissioner Day, because he has a lot of expert keys, and I expect that it will be a, a joint product, so please, um, ask him if he's willing to lead on it.
I will ask Commissioner Day this evening if he's interested in, in, um, writing the minority report. If he declines, would you like me to then return to you? Unless Commissioner Hanson or Commissioner Pesinger, would either one of you care to pen the minority report?
Maybe, but you don't need to request it, we can do it if we want.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, well, you have to have two people for a minority report. You can't do an individual minority report, there has to be two people that sign on to it.
Well, that's not the same.
Certainly willing to sign on to it.
Yeah, that's not the same as being requesting a lead, maybe there doesn't have to be an official lead.
Um, for me to, when I forward the recommendations to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, there has to be a verdict report, and a minority report, a recommendation, minority report, I don't know how you have like four different minority reports.
No, I mean, that could be, I see what you're, so I guess you're, yeah, so I really, I guess what's the question being asked is who's responsible for making sure that one is delivered, sort of, that's kind of the question?
Um, my intention is to get a hold of Commissioner Day, ask him if he wants to do it. If Commissioner Day doesn't want to do it, you'll hear from me.
Okay.
Very quickly.
Yeah.
Um, I will ask you to do it, and if you, at that time, choose not to do it, I'll go down the list of commissioners and find somebody that is interested in pinning it, and then make sure that everybody else that is in the minority, um, has, has the ability.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanna say, I mean, I feel a little uncomfortable with it, because, I mean, I feel like Commissioner Day, um, has the, has the qualification.
He's good.
Because of his background.
Sure.
And I feel, um, otherwise, um, you know, I mean, I'm willing to do it. I just know that I just started in January, so, you know, there's a history.
And I don't want this to, I don't want anybody to feel like either, that just once this minority report is issued, that that's the last you have to say. Oh, you're certainly welcome to go to any BOCC work sessions or meetings or anything else, and let them know exactly how you feel about things.
I just, a question here.
Go ahead.
Can, can Commissioner Day write it since he wasn't here to vote? I don't know if it's a minority or.
Let's have that discussion real quick.
Any two commissioners, any two or more concurring planning commissioners that we got, that's the entire sentence I wanted. May submit a minority report to accompany the committee report to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, it does not specifically state that particular person needs to be here or have voted.
So the author doesn't have to have been involved in that portion of it?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so that part's settled. Andrew, thank you very much, that's been, it's been a long, long time. I hope more than half your work's done.
Oh, yeah.
I hope it's more than halfway done, because I know you still have a long haul with ecology and the board, so, um, thank you very much.
Milestone achieves.
Good job.
Thank you very much. All right, well, SMP is now done at the planning commission level, other than a few papers.
I do have, maybe I will ask.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The companion document we talked about.
I will have a lot of time while we're waiting for ecology to approve, hopefully approve our SMP, uh, next year.
But we do want that recommendation to go on board, that's what we want.
That can be a reminder, that is something.
Because that's what we talked about before, is that.
I, I thought that was decided like years ago.
It was. I just, I just remind everybody. Bring you up to speed.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
With the, there's a lot of technical stuff, you know, and there to be, the, the whole board who's sitting there trying to decide what they're gonna do, their, their lakefront, riverfront, or whatever, and to them, it's just a little maintenance thing. But according to the code, it's development, or it might not be, but you don't know.
Yeah.
And so how can it make it easier for them to do the right thing? And that's what this companion document is, is kind of a, the Fish and Wildlife used to have that. And if you had it in your hand, and you were doing according to what they said in that little pamphlet, that was your permit, you didn't need a permit. They don't have that anymore, but like putting gravel in, in the lake, you could do that, so.
Or replacing a dock board or something like that.
So, but you know how many boards you can.
Uh, where you can find native vegetation.
I think that your pamphlet is gonna be more than a page.
It will be a guide to stock.
Because that, that something needs to be worked in a certain way, and it's got a lot of nebulous concepts in it that are derived from state law. And then there's something we can actually produce alongside of that to help people understand it, both our permiters and the people who are doing this on the shoreline. Commissioner Carmen said, help them do the right thing, there are things that people might not even know they need permission for, that have detrimental effects on the shoreline. We can educate them on that, that's, that's our charge, we need to, so.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, how, how does that look in the letter? Just wanted to have the commissioners encourage staff to prepare that, or how is that?
Yeah.
Just keep it, keep it in the forefront, okay? Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna, we have a couple of items for, uh, good as the order, one of them is, we're gonna have address Commissioner Wheatley's topic on minutes, uh, if we need some more there, and the other issue being on who gets to sign, not pen, but sign a minority report. Would you like to start on one or the other?
Well, it's not, let's do the, let's do the one that's the most immediate here, which is who gets to sign a minority report.
I guess we're looking for guidance from you.
So it sounds like, yeah, I think, I, all we need to do, I think, is agree or not disagree with that, right?
Correct, you do need to know that there will be a minority report typically, um, that is stated, uh, after the vote. Um, there is also, any planning commissioner may have his or her minority opinion, which is different than a minority report, um, heard, but it needs to be entered into, it's immediately or the, um, the record immediately following the vote. Um, and then all of that gets forwarded at the same time to the, um, or county commissioners, um, so that, that says as much, you know.
So the rules and procedures say specifically who's allowed to and who's not allowed to sign a minority.
It is silent.
It's silent on the issue.
It says any two or more concurring planning commissioners may submit a minority report to accompany the committee's report.
Now, what is, what is your, what is the county's concern with somebody that didn't vote on a specific issue?
They wouldn't be able to, but they didn't, if they, it is a, try that again, sorry guys.
Maybe we should call this in a minority opinion anyway, it's not a minority, or, or which way?
Either.
Okay.
Either vernacular works.
Okay.
Um, the question comes into play is if they weren't there to, um, vote, then, um, if they sign on to the minority report, if they wanted to do the opposite and sign on to the majority vote, you have to be present to vote. So it just becomes a little unclear at that point in time to the rest of the public and what the planning commissioners can and can't do if they are not available, or they're excused from a meeting. As far as how their votes count.
But our rules don't actually say that there has to be connection between a vote and a signature on the minority.
Does not.
Well, the minority opinion, I mean, it's based on, now, I mean, it's based on the work that's done, so, you know, some kind of work on it for five years, you know, and.
I think you're not getting any hard to be honest.
Yeah, right, so.
Unless the county has, uh, a good reason for us not to allow somebody to sign on to a minority opinion, I think we should allow them to sign on to a minority opinion.
Yeah.
Is, is anybody, anybody online have a, any heartache with allowing somebody that missed a vote to sign on to an opinion?
Not at all, I think that's a great idea. Agreed.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Do you?
No, I don't have a problem.
Oh, you don't, okay, well, I mean, that sounds pretty unanimous to me, so, and unless, unless, you know, legal comes back and wants to beat us over the head with it, I, I say let, let them sign their name. Okay, well, let's.
Also, can I point something out?
Go ahead.
I think, uh, rules and procedure are actually clear on this, and I would, section nine, section A. It says in Reddit, any are concurring planning commission.
I guess, I, I understand where a concurrence might be required to be connected to a vote in some other thing, it's not defined in this particular document, but since we all agree on it, um, I, I think it's kind of a moot point at this point, we're, we're gonna let Commissioner Day sign on to anything that we voted on tonight. Okay. Okay, um, Ben, we still got a little bit of time to burn out this idea on minutes, if you'd like. You wanted to talk more about, about, I know we already, we covered some of that earlier.
Yeah, I think we covered the things.
We covered that enough.
And then they had a vote, and then they were suggesting changes.
I have a couple of comments about it.
Commissioner Pesinger?
So, again, uh, I think it's covered in our rules of procedure, um, it's referenced in this section and about minority reports, section nine, in part D, um, it specifically says that a minority opinion, different from a minority report, uh, any planning commissioner may have his or her minority opinion heard and entered into, and it doesn't say the record, it says into the minutes immediately following a vote to be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners, in addition to majority or minority reports. And later throughout the minutes section in thirteen, meeting minutes, and both the objectives of minutes and content of minutes. It's very clear to distinguish between meeting minutes and a meeting record, and in fact, in section A, point five, it says for an official meeting record, meeting tapes shall be used. It talks about the fact that the content of minutes would never include everything that was said, it only contains a concise factual record of what was done. It very clearly delineates the difference between meeting minutes and meeting records, and I, I don't find it, we're, we're missing several elements of what needs to be included in meeting minutes according to our own rules of procedure. And, uh, that's why we continue to have these discussions and debates, I really think we need to follow our rules.
Could you, could you clarify that? Oh, could you read more of that?
Yes, so section thirteen, titled meeting minutes, both under objectives of minutes and content of minutes differentiates between meeting minutes and meeting record, the meeting record is the recording, which we're all saying is the official record of our meeting. But it specifically then separates out a bunch of details about what should be in meeting minutes, and the things that we seem to be missing the most are things like, in part B one, planning commissioner would like a particular statement to be placed in the minutes, not in the record, in the minutes, they should state that. Then in, uh, detailed summary of public hearing testimony. Then summary of only major points for post-hearing work sessions that are continued to another meeting for use by planning commissioners who missed the meeting or want to refresh their memory as to what occurred in preparing for the follow-up. Um, and then what I think is also missing, and maybe most notably, is in part seven, it says, or part six and seven, planning commission requests for information or questions of staff that require follow-up work with a list of outstanding requests attached to each, each set of minutes for reference, and reference to documents that are cited by planning commissioners rather than complete excerpts presented at the meetings.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Well, I'm just thinking about, and I don't have the language right in front of me, I'm thinking about like to- tonight, like, some of the stuff I wanted to get into the record, um, and, and I sort of said, well, you know, I want, you know, I'm looking at the stuff that there hasn't been a hearing on. And, you know, I sort of see minutes as something that the public can, you know, not only we can refer back to, and if you think about it, I mean, like, think about how one, you know, what we, we just dealt with, you know, the SMP took, and, and one of the things I wanted to get into the record was the list of, sort of an excellent, I mean, into the mi- minutes, uh, an explanation of the choices that were before the commission in terms of the direction, you know, like, um, you know, we were given basically a set of potential directions to go, and then we picked one, and I think it's useful to have that set of directions in there, you know, whether, I mean, I agree with the, the, the direction we wanted to go, but you know, for a member of public, of the public who's interested in the topic and planning on going to the hearing, that's useful information for them, and it's a useful reminder for us, so I guess what I'm thinking is in terms of process, um, and it gets a little tricky because the minutes have to reflect the record, so you can't just as a commissioner come and say, well, I want it to say this, right, if, if it's not in there. But at the same time, maybe, the way I'm hearing that language, it's providing leeway for a commissioner to say, I think this is important and it should be included. It doesn't say whether that has to be done at the meeting where it's said, because that would be very disruptive in a way. I mean, you know, to say, oh, that's an important point, I'll be sure to put that in the minutes, you know, every time it comes up, that would drive everybody crazy. Um, but, you know, the opportunity for a commissioner to reflect and say, well, you know, I, I really think those three decision points are important to have in the minutes, maybe there needs to be a way, you know, other than just that up and down vote that we had. Um, but it sounds like there's supposed to be some kind of leeway to be able to say, this is of sufficient importance that it should be in the minutes.
I, I think that we've had some of these discussions before about what needs to be in the minutes, what needs to be in the record, and one of the commissions concerned was that our, what we call minutes are really a summary.
Yeah.
And they're getting, we don't want them to get longer and longer and longer and longer, and I think that the, the, um, contention that Commissioner Pesinger you might have is that our rules of procedure require them to get longer than what we are doing right now, um, and how to reconcile those two things, I'm not really sure. I, can our record be our minutes?
Well, I think, I mean, maybe, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna resolve this tonight, but could you reread that language about?
Well, I.
Yeah.
I, I think there's definitely further discussion, but I really wanna hear from Commissioner.
So the one thing that you were asking about, about putting stuff in the record.
Yeah.
And I'll refer, I'll ask Commissioner Pesinger, because I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that's after a vote. Which means if we have a vote, and there's something, what it's been for is, if we have a vote and I disagree with the vote, I'm, I'm the only person to vote nay, then I, I don't have a minority report to write, I have the opportunity to make a statement for the record.
Right.
Yeah, that's the minority opinion section.
And what you read.
That's separate.
That was exactly what you read, I think. It's, it's said after a vote.
Well, there was.
Well, that's for a minority opinion, but it also says, if a planning commissioner would like a particular statement to be placed in the minutes, they should state that for the record.
Well, I think you just said it, if, if you have something that you want in the minutes, you state it, you don't expect the staff to just put it in there. You say, I would, I want this reflect, I would like this reflected in the minutes, so. You say, I would, I want this reflect, I would like this reflected in the minutes, so then.
And that's exactly what I said at the last meeting that was not included that I had a column about.
So you have to request for it to be reflected in the minutes.
That's.
That's gonna get.
Okay, am I losing my mind? Did I do that?
Have to go back and, that's way too long ago.
Okay, it's reflected in this. Okay, well, does anybody else have anything to say on that particular subject? Does anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.